The swearing in.
Front and center.
Front and center.
Get your little face out there.
No, we need, yeah. You? Okay, are we ready? I, Fred Jones, do solemnly swear.
I, Fred Jones, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government of the United States and the state of Florida.
Yeah, that too. Constitution of the state and of the country.
The Constitution and government of the United States.
Constitution and government of the United States.
And the state of Florida.
And the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
For the city of Sebastian.
For the city of Sebastian.
Of which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Want pictures? Want pictures? You have to sign here. Thank you. You can go up on the dais. Mayor, Mayor McPartlin? Yeah, you want a picture?
I'm going to go to work, I'm here at work.
It's on.
I'm glad Fred got the bloopers out.
I, Bob McPartlin.
I, Bob McPartlin.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold the office.
That I am duly qualified to hold the office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member for the city of Sebastian.
Of the office of council member for the city of Sebastian.
Of which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Of which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations. Good job. Picture? Council member Nun. Oh, here. I see that.
You have to stand right here.
Yeah, and your dad has to put his hand on the Bible. I, Christopher Nun, do solemnly swear.
I, Christopher Nun, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member for the city of Sebastian.
For the office of council member for the city of Sebastian.
Of which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations. Go ahead, picture.
Am I going to get in trouble if I don't get a picture?
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
And Ms. Sherri Matthews. I, Sherri Matthews, do solemnly swear.
I, Sherri Matthews, do solemnly swear.
That I will support, protect, and defend.
I will support, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and government.
The Constitution and government.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
Of the United States and the state of Florida.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
That I am duly qualified to hold office.
Under the Constitution of the state.
Under the Constitution of the state.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
I will well and faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of council member.
Of the office of council member.
For the city of Sebastian.
For the city of Sebastian.
Of which I am about to enter, so help me God.
Of which I'm about to enter, so help me God.
Congratulations. Sherri. Sign, and then you go sit up on the dais.
I will.
Okay, that's fine.
All right. Hi, good evening, I'll call this meeting to order. If we could please rise for the invocation by Pastor Grant Foster of Riverside Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Vice Mayor Jones.
Let's pray. Father, we thank you for this new council. We pray your blessing and your guidance and your wisdom upon them. We pray for the staff, and especially tonight, Lord, for Jeanette, our city clerk. We pray for your grace, your mercy, and your touch upon her body. We ask now that you would just inhabit this meeting, that you would direct and guide, and we thank you for the beautiful place we call home Sebastian. In Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
All right, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, council, at this time I'll call for nominations for mayor.
I would like to nominate Bob McPartlin.
Any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Fred Jones. Nothing wrong with Bob, I like Bob, but.
Kathy? Call the girl.
Uh, council member Nun.
Fred Jones.
Council member Matthews.
Bob McPartlin.
Council member Dodd.
Fred Jones.
Council member Jones.
Fred Jones.
And council member McPartlin.
Fred Jones.
All right, now we're going to have a call for nominations for Vice Mayor. I nominate Chris Nun.
I nominate Bob McPartlin.
All right, any other? Madam Clerk?
Council member Matthews.
Bob McPartlin.
Council member Dodd.
Bob McPartlin.
Council member Jones. Mayor Jones.
McPartlin.
Council member McPartlin.
McPartlin.
And council member Nun.
McPartlin.
All right, now we're going to have the reading of the Certificate of Canvassing Board or Returns by the City Attorney. Mr. Stokes.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, there was, since they were all unopposed. There was no canvassing board convened.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call.
Vice Mayor McPartlin.
Here.
Council member Nun.
Here.
Council member Matthews.
Present.
Council member Dodd.
Here.
Mayor Jones.
Here. All right, thank you. Do we have any agenda modifications by any? All right, hearing Nun. Presentations, we have Nun, brief announcements, Vice Mayor McPartlin.
All right, Thursday, November 13th, we have Market Fresh on the Move at City Hall from 1:15 to 3:00 p.m. And Saturday, November 15th, Hunt for Hope, scavenger hunt fundraiser for breast cancer at Riverview Park Pavilion from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. Saturday, November 22nd, Sebastian River Art Club at Riverview Park from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Thursday and Friday, November 27th and 28th, City Hall will be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday. Just the same?
Yeah. No, this is Spirit of Sebastian, one. Yeah, it's the same as that. All right, that was it? All right, very good. Next, we're going to have a presentation by Spirit of Sebastian. Oh, no, just before we do that, I'd like to have County Commissioner Laura Moss come forward, please.
Well, it's my pleasure to congratulate Mayor Fred Jones and Vice Mayor Bob McPartlin. I look forward to working with all of the council. Congratulations to the new council member. I just want to say to the community, though, yesterday, the Veterans Day ceremony is beautiful, and to me especially touching, because all four of your councilmen attended the ceremony. All four are veterans, and, you know, what an honor just to be there and to be present with all of you. And thank you, you know, for your service. And I know that Councilwoman Matthews had left, retired from a career in law enforcement, so we appreciate our law enforcement personnel as well. So, look forward to working with all of you, and I just wanted to mention one thing. And I gave this to the city clerk, but this is for the community. Everyone is invited to the Purple Heart cane ceremony, which is held in January, January 17th. You don't have to remember this, the city clerk has it. But Saturday, January 17th, at 1:00 p.m. at the Navy SEAL Museum. What they do is, and anybody out there who is a Purple Heart recipient, a combat wounded veteran, can get one of these canes. They are individually hand carved. It's a nonprofit group, 100% volunteer, they receive no funding. It's, they, they put their heart in these Purple Heart canes. It's a beautiful thing. But I encourage everyone to attend, and anyone who is a Purple Heart recipient, you can apply to receive a cane at purpleheartcaneproject.org. Thank you so much, I appreciate seeing all of you. God bless.
All right, thank you so much. Next, we're going to have.
President of Taxpayer also wanted to congratulate everybody.
Oh, that's fine.
I'm not sure what you had, that's Mr. Lance Lunsford.
Yeah, come on up, you had a minute, Lance, and 30 seconds have already left you now.
I'll make it quick then.
Okay.
Counsel, wanted to thank you so much, and really echo what Commissioner Moss said. On behalf of the Taxpayers Association, we've appreciated the collaboration with the city of Sebastian. And to Councilwoman Matthews, I really want to congratulate you on your election to this body, to Mayor Jones and Vice Mayor McPartlin on your reelection, and of course, to Councilmember Nun on your reelection as well. Really just want to echo that our association always remains committed to working with the city of Sebastian. I may be from Vero Beach, but this is a special city. I know it means so much to each and every one of you, and I'm looking forward to continuing the great collaboration between the Taxpayers Association and the city of Sebastian. And also want to echo all the tremendous work that each and every one of you do, not only on this council, but outside the council. In particular, I know Councilmember Dodd's activism with the Florida League of Cities is contiguous with our association's priority of home rule here in Indian River County. So, on many issues, we certainly look forward to all the work that we can do together. And with that, Mayor Jones, thank you for your time.
Okay, your time's up. Now, we're going to have a presentation by Spirit of Sebastian.
Thought I was just in public input, so thank you very much. I didn't know it was good to do a presentation, so hey, thank you. Hi, everybody. Congratulations, by the way. Just want to say hello, I'm Karen with the Spirit of Sebastian. I am dressed tonight as our mascot, which is a bee, barnaby, for the Spirit of Sebastian, to invite everyone, yourselves included, everyone out there, to our inaugural event called Afternoons in the Agri-Hood this Saturday, November 15th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. So, if you don't know what an agri-hood is, I hope you do by now, but our community, Spirit of Sebastian, is a planned community that integrates agriculture into a residential neighborhood. We have over 100 beehives out in the community, which is why we picked a bee for our mascot. So, we're so excited. The whole vision for this community, as you all know from the beginning, was to obviously open our community, not just to our lovely residents, but to the community at large. So, that's why we decided to hold this public event out in our beautiful Heritage Park. We have an award-winning social center out there that's going to be open. We have so many things planned. Like I said, it's from 2:00 to 5:00 this Saturday. We have a bunch of handpicked artisans coming out, local farmers and makers, everything from sourdough bread to pickles to home goods and permanent jewelry. We're having live cooking demonstrations from Wild Time Catering inside the clubhouse. We have live music, we have a kid's zone, it's family-friendly, it's free to attend. So, we hope everyone comes out. It's the first one, we're doing a series of six of these through the month of April. So, we have them on select Saturdays for the next six months. So, if you can't make this one, please come out and join us. We would love to see you, and we'd love you to come out and see what we're doing out at the Spirit of Sebastian. And if you would indulge me, I have a flyer that I did not give to the city clerk, so that I would love to hand out, along with a little bit of our sweet honey, if I have two seconds to run down and enjoy. Thank you very much. I needed my paper to be, and I don't have one, so I get to do it myself. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
I appreciate you dressing in costume.
Thank you, dear.
All right, thank you so much for that. All right, next, we're going to have a special presentation by a group. All right, next, we're gonna have a special presentation by a group. I don't wanna mess up all the names in this group, but Derek, your group, can you come up and share? Do we have the PowerPoint ready?
Yes, sir, they'll get PowerPoint on.
All right.
I advance her. Copy, got it right here, got it, yeah, yeah, yeah. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Jones, and thank you for your invitation for us to come and speak to not only the council, which we're pleased to be able to stand in front of, the Vice Mayor, but also the citizens of Sebastian. We are representatives of SeaSafe, which is a collective of not only residents, but also industry leaders in the marine industry, and also science backing, working towards a cleaner lagoon, which we all want to see in the future for ourselves and the people that are coming after us. The SeaSafe event that we had in Grant at the Old Fish House, just in April of this, or of this year, was a coalition of not just citizens and volunteers, but again, industry and, and area leaders and bivouard, and then also, we got to see some of our neighbors to the south in Sebastian come up and visit us also. In this SeaSafe, or Clean Water Collective, the director is Corey Redwine here. She runs a nonprofit, which is Sea Redwine Preservation, that's dedicated to conservation, preservation, and restoration of the Indian River Lagoon. Our science is actually backed by University of Florida and Dr. Todd Osborne, who is a marine biologist of the great extent, and is in tune with what we're looking to do in restoration here on the Indian River Lagoon, if you wanna go ahead and advance. SeaSafe in general is an idea and a bringing together of people, and this bringing together of people involves restoration in many different aspects, from shoreline restoration with tens of thousands of mangroves that we transplanted during our event in Grant, to one of our main cornerstone of the, the project, which is the resupplying and reinvigorating of our traditional clam beds that were once found in the Indian River Lagoon, that are filters for that lagoon, keeping the water clean, allowing the seagrass to grow, and things of that nature. Don Pender of the, the Grant, or of Old Fish House, came to us and said, "We'd like to put about a million clams behind Old Fish House." We already had a couple hundred thousand that had been growing for years back there, very well, through this program, and they wanted to go to a million. As of date, only a handful of months later, we're at 21 million clams behind the Old Fish House, between the sandbars, also the islands out across, you know, across the channel, and then also, almost directly across over in the, in the Hog Point area, another 10 to 12 million. So, just in that area, looking at about 30 million or so clams that we've been able to reintroduce, in hopes to spur the natural spawning beds, if you wanna go ahead, and, and hope to, again, reinvigorate that traditional clam bed that we had prior to its demise several years ago, along with the mangrove planting and seagrass plantings. We do this to not just involve an organization or a group, but also citizens in general, volunteers, and just about anybody else who wants to come be part of this. As we move on to an event that we are doing in the same area next year, in late April, around, around Earth Day, around the 20th, we will again be looking to put millions of clams in that general area. And we are actually also looking to court some of the restaurants and/or public areas that we can get access to potentially come this way a bit with those plantings, and would love to have any insight and helpful dialogue with the council members, mayor and vice mayor of Sebastian here, in ways we can encourage that to happen. Again, fighting for an idea that all, all tide lifts all boats, or rising tide lifts all boats, and we're all in this together, we're bivouard residents, but are deeply familiar and with this area down here. I did my honeymoon here, and we vacation down here as often as we can, and the lagoon is truly one lagoon, and all of the cities and counties along this lagoon bear a responsibility and a want to see that lagoon come to better days and, and a more consistent pattern of that. Again, we would look to hopefully open any dialogue to expand these programs, and, and just have a, a good working relationship with the City of Sebastian in these programs.
Thank you, thank you so much. Anybody have questions for them? Is this getting out? I don't feel like it's getting out, is it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
Yeah.
No questions? Thank you guys so much for that presentation.
Thank you for having us.
Absolutely.
And congratulations.
Yes.
Thank you. All right, now, we're gonna recess the city council meeting and convene the community rede... oh, sorry. Is there anyone from the public would like to speak on anything that's not on the current agenda? Anyone on Zoom?
No one has raised their hand at this time.
All right, public input is closed. Now, we're gonna recess the city council meeting and convene the Community Redevelopment Agency. Item number one, what do we have? Consideration for Approval of Florida Department of Environmental Protection. Staff? Oh, I moved too fast, didn't I? Sorry. Moving too fast.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So, the item that you have before you tonight is for the grant with FDUP for the Septic to Sewer Program. This is a grant for $3.6 million, of which the portion of the CRA would be 190,000, and the grant documentation is behind you, and this has already been budgeted, and it's in alignment with our approved, adopted master plan for the CRA. Be happy to answer any questions, in addition to having Karen here, so.
All right, anything else? Mr. Benton?
No, I just wanna add, you know, this has kind of been a long time coming, we've been working towards this, we were awarded it, we received the notification of the award about a year ago, in March, or March of this year. So, we've been waiting to get this, and now this will allow us to facilitate a program in which we can assist property owners along, within the CRA area, to connect to, to the county sewer, as we continue to move along.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
All right, hearing Nun, public input's closed, council?
Mr. Mayor, move approval.
Second.
So, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Madam Clerk, call her off.
Vice Chairman McPartlin.
Yes.
Mr. Nun.
Yes.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Now, we gotta move on to 10B.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Today, we are here for the consideration of a piggyback contract for, wow, 2025-005. It's an RFP that was issued by Indian River County to Meeks Plumbing. We are looking to piggyback this contract that is for utility service labor. Meeks Plumbing currently provides utility service labor to the county, and that includes wastewater collection, transmission, reclamation. So, they do this work for the county on, and they price it out on an hourly basis. We would like to use this contract to move forward with our connections for Septic to Sewer, and we are asking for a purchase order and a not-to-exceed amount of 1.5 million. So, this, the project will be invoiced based on the contracted rates, but because the connections will vary by each house and each, vary by each house, each location, and the nature of what they have to do is gonna change, that's why we're asking for a blanket, because we could not get a broad quote to say, "How much is it gonna cost for us to connect X amount of houses?" There's no way to know that until they get to each location. So, I am asking for the board to approve this item and to pass it along to city council for approval. If you have any other questions, Karen Miller is here to answer them, or Mr. Benton, who is currently staring me down, he can answer them, too.
All right, thank you. Anybody else from staff? No? Anyone from the public would like to speak on this? Anyone on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Hearing Nun, public input's closed, council? Will deliberate, say anything?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Yes, sir.
The, the pricing schedule, and, and I don't have any issue with a piggyback contract, but the pricing schedule from the county does not include such things as abating an existing septic tank, building lift station. You're saying your head is in there, and I missed it, or?
It is included in that contract.
Okay.
They currently provide those services for the county, and they were the same company that worked on the Wabaso Project and the Rosen Road Project.
All right, so we're, we're okay with that part of it, 'cause I didn't see that in the schedule. I saw, you know, piping and, and so forth, and grouting, grouting cleanouts and that kinda stuff, but I didn't see anything with that. Okay, and then, the 1.5 million, approximately how many, given the fact that we don't know exactly how many lift stations are gonna be needed, and, and so forth, roughly how many properties do we think we can do with that 1.5 million?
So, we have a list of which ones will, we anticipate lift stations, but this is looking to be a majority of the CRA, and about 97 locations are going to be connected. This is just the first part of this request. We did not wanna put a purchase order for the entire, entire grant, but we are going to be, it should be about the 97 sites.
So, we, I guess that's what I was kinda getting at when I was looking at this. Is it, is it worth making this for greater than the 1.5 million, anticipating that, that we don't wanna, it's no reason to slow down the progress. We know we're gonna do this work. There's no reason to slow down the progress by not committing our, the city to the, the amount of money that's needed. So, is 1.5 million sufficient? Should we, should we do $2 million? I mean, we've got a $3.1 million grant, we're gonna spend some of that money in planning purposes and so forth, but I just would hate to see us get to some point and then come back and have, I don't know, maybe three or four different people sitting up here and, and not wanna approve any more money.
Yeah, thank you, sir. That, we had that same discussion internally with staff. Originally, we had discussed, starting at 500,000, and then we kept kinda looking at the numbers, and once we get close to the 1.5 million expenditure, we think that's gonna be close for the CRA, but we realized that we may need additional funding. The one thing we didn't wanna do is we didn't wanna allocate the majority of the money, say $3 million, to Meeks, because we may find an instance to where there may be a potential other vendor, or there may be, we, we may have completed the CRA, and FDUP allows us, which we have had discussions with them on this, to expand the connections to somewhere else within the city that has the ability to. So, at that point, we'd have to come back to council anyways, 'cause it'd be a different scope of work. So, we felt like 1.5 million would get us a really good head start. Once we get close on the number, I don't think you'll see a delay, 'cause we will quickly come back to council for approval for additional allocation.
All right, 'cause this is a do-not-exceed 1.5 million. We're not actually committing 1.5 million to Meeks, we're saying, we're gonna use their, piggyback on their contract, and on a per, on a, a per-property-unit basis, they're gonna come in with a bid, and we're gonna, then, at that point in time, we're gonna commit funds to them to do that work.
Yes, sir. It'll just be under a, it'll be under a blanket PO for Meeks. The 1.5 million dollars will be a blanket PO for Meeks. We may not expend the full 1.5 with them, but it will give us that ability to go up to that amount.
And, and my next question is, got nothing to do with this thing, is, do we have any indication right now on the county's work schedule to the point where we can begin? I mean, we, if I understand it correctly, we have notifications we need to send out to property owners, there's some things that we need to do mechanically, that the longer we wait to do them, the longer it takes to do the work. Should we not start that process now?
So, we can, we are, there are already properties that can connect that have sewer available. Those will be our first targets from this point, this meeting tonight, if everything gets approved from CRA board and also council. Our first step is to approach and go after those properties to get, get them in here and get them connected.
Okay.
I will tell you, and I'll have it under my matters, the county did start today on their first installation of infrastructure within the CRA. They have started across the street from Fisherman's Landing, within that easement location and that, that area. So, that is the first step with them beginning to install the infrastructure that is needed to complete the full 97. But there are properties that can connect today that we will begin to push and, and provide them the funding.
Okay, now, we have yet to approve a resolution that mandates connection, if I understand it correctly.
We have yet to. We're gonna be bringing in ordinance to you all. There was a change in, in the attorney, and, and that whole realm kinda slowed us down a little bit, but that, that ordinance will be coming to city council, and we will be requesting via ordinance direction from you all to require connection within 12 or 18 months, whatever the decision is made. Once the sewer line, and once the infrastructure is available, they then have to connect within that timeframe.
Okay, all right. My request to you, when you bring that back, is you bring back funding required for us to do a blanket notification to everybody at the, at the approval of that ordinance, that that's gonna take place, because there are some state statutes that require 12-month notifications for certain steps and 12-month notifications for other steps. And we can get ourselves caught in a situation, we're ready to connect people, and they're gonna say no, and then we gotta go through a whole litany of things before we can say to them, "It's a code issue if you don't connect."
Yes, so we will include calls for mailouts and send postcards out to every property owner, and start that process depending on how the ordinance is laid out.
Okay, all right.
And the ordinance has already been, I think we're almost completed, it's been written, it's just gotta go through its, its route to get, get approval before it comes before
I know they changed that statute, I think, last year, on what has to be done with that, that notification process, so it, all right. Mr. Mayor, given that, I'll move approval.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing Nun, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Nun.
Yes.
Ms. Matthews.
Yes.
Mr. Dodd.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes.
And Vice Chairman McPartlin.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you so much. Now, we're gonna recess the Community Redevelopment Agency and reconvene the city council meeting. First thing we have is item 12, the Consent Agenda. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
Move approval.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
My second.
Now, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, all right, motion carries. Committee reports, does anybody have any committee reports? All right, hearing Nun, we'll move on to item 13A, consideration of council appointees to the Indian River County Regional Boards. And for me, I'm good with the boards that I'm currently on, so I don't really wanna change anything. It's 121.
I don't know if she needs to be actually appointed, but I think Councilmember Matthews should begin to get involved in Florida League of Cities.
There you go, that's a great one.
Bob, the Vice Mayor is the alternate on that right now, but I don't know that we need to actually make her an alternate, 'cause they don't, they'll, they'll, they'll allow anybody that's a council-elected official to get involved in that, so.
Okay.
Which means, there's a meeting on the 19th, I'll tell you about it.
Thank you.
Then, of course, Ms. Matthews could be the backup for the MPO, 'cause we've been without, for, for a while.
Yeah.
And then, I don't know if she's interested in being the backups for the Beach and Shores and the Economic Development Council, or if somebody else is interested.
I don't mind being a backup, but that doesn't give you permission to not show up.
And then, the Economic Development Council, did you say, how about Chris Nun doing that, Councilmember Nun doing that? Economic Development Council, alternate member? No, as the, yeah, as the alternate member? Okay. And then, MPO? What'd you say, Matthews?
I think it was a voluntold, but...
I don't know when he got in charge.
Well, oh, there they are, on that other page there. So, who's going on as an alternate on the Metropolitan Planning?
Ms. Matthews.
And who are we doing, she's also gonna be... And, who are we doing, she's also going to be alternate on the Beach and Shore?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Who is on the Economic Development Council as an alternate?
That was Chris.
We don't have one?
Councilmember Nun.
Chris.
Oh, Nun, okay. Do you want to do that, Chris, or you?
That's fine.
You okay with it?
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so, everything else looks good, right? Everybody else is happy where they are?
Yes.
Alright, Madam Clerk, you have those?
I do, thank you.
Thank you. Alright, next item is 13B, consider filling one regular member position and one alternate member position on the P and Z.
Ms. Mayor, I move to reappoint Susan LaSuro to the full-time member and Terry Reno to the alternate position.
Um, this is, oh, we also, I would like to share, Ms. Matthews will not be on that board, can we just waive, like the?
Let it be advertised.
Waive the advertisement for that? I believe we can waive that, is that?
That, that is within your purview, if you want to waive that.
So, we can waive that and appoint one of the people that have applied.
Okay.
So, I think that probably, rather than coming back and doing it again, I think it's wise to do it that way now.
Is Mr. Reno in here?
Yes.
Mr. Reno?
Is he here?
Is Mr. Reno in the audience? No? No, he's not here.
Has he been attending? He has, yeah.
I would like to nominate him to move to the?
Permanent?
Permanent position, along with Ms. LaRusso.
That's an idea.
And then, we have to choose one of the other applicants to fill that alternate position, so.
Well, then I nominate Mr. Garten to take over the alternate position.
Alright, so we have Mr. Garten, any, any other nominations? Alright, do you have it, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
So, we have?
Susan LaRusso.
Susan maintain her position.
And Terry Reno's going to become permanent.
Yes.
And then, Roy Garten's going to be the alternate member.
Good, alright. Do we have any other discussion on that? Do we need to call a roll on that and make sure, Mr. Stokes, or no? No, just consensus? Alright, thank you.
Maybe just to make it legal, let me make a motion if we waive the advertisement requirement for the new permanent position on the council.
Good.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Alright, so we have a motion and a second to, to waive the advertisement for the other position, the alternate.
Yes.
Any other communication from anyone? Nope? Alright, let's call a roll.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McPartlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Moving on, item 14, public hearings, we have none. 15, unfinished business, none. Item number 16, new business. Consideration and first reading of ordinance number O-25-05. Mr. Stokes, do you need to read?
Yes. Ordinance number O-25-05, an ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, providing a zoning designation for lands with prior city zoning designations of RS-10, Single Family Residential District, and IN, Industrial District, and annexed lands with a prior county zoning designation of IL, Light Industrial District, to PUD-R, Planned Unit Development Residential, in accordance with the conceptual development plan for land consisting of 148.5 acres more or less, formerly known as the Vickers Sand Mine, located east of Lance Street, west of the FEC Railroad, south of Gilson and Concord Avenues, and north of Beach Cove Mobile Home Park, providing for conflicts, scribners' errors, and severability, and providing for an effective date.
Alright, thank you so much. Ms. Bosworth, is that you?
Yes, I believe the applicant has a presentation, and they're going to speak first, give you a little purview of the, the development they would like to rezone.
Very good, applicant come forward.
Hi, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Jim Vitter, I'm a professional engineer with BGE. I'm here on behalf of the property owner and the applicant to request approval of the Treasure Bay PUD residential development. This slide here shows vicinity map and location map of where the property is, generally it's west of the FEC railroad tracks, south of Schuman, east of Lance Street, and north of 99th Street. Proposed project would include 180 single-family residential units, 110 of those would be single-family detached, and 70 of those would be paired villas. The property generally consists of three different zoning types currently. It would be RS-10 industrial and also county light industrial property. We're proposing a PUD-R zoning over all of the property, including the Industrial Park Boulevard, access to the south. Site is formerly a sand mine, so the majority of the property in the middle is a, is an existing wet detention area. There is a area of uplands around the outside of the property where all of the development would occur. Property is outside of the 100-year floodplain elevation. It has no environmentally sensitive lands, fragile lands, or wetlands on the site. The existing water body will serve as the stormwater retention pond for the proposed development, and there will be no offsite discharge from that lake. There are also minimal existing trees on the site, so there would be very limited tree removal as part of the development. And the property is also served by Indian River County Water and Sewer. The project as proposed is, again, 180 units on the total property for an overall density of 1.21 acres. As you can see, of the 148 acres, 85 acres is the lake which will, which will continue. You can see from the aerial with the FEC railroad tracks on the east side, property is generally surrounded by existing residential development. You'll also notice that the uplands area is relatively narrow around the edge of the property where all the development will occur. This is a site plan for the property, which is very hard to read at this scale, but generally is a loop road around the outside rim of the property with a single load, a, a single row of residential lots adjacent to the road. Access to the site to the north, is the northeast corner to Essex, and to the southeast via Industrial Park Boulevard down to 99th Street. There are also two pedestrian connections, sidewalk connections on the west end of the property to Lance Street. The site design also includes several public and private recreational areas and amenities. In total, there are 2.94 acres versus a requirement of 1.8 acres, so exceeding the required acreage for recreation areas. The private recreation areas include a kayak launch and gazebo area at the very northeast corner, a pickleball court and residential park along the north edge of the property, and also a dog park at the southeast corner. The public recreation areas include several items, the largest of which is an eight-foot bike path that will go along the entire eastern portion of the property, connecting from Essex all the way down Industrial Park Boulevard to 99th Street. Further, the public benefits, again, the eight-foot bike path along the east side with enhanced landscaping on both sides of the sidewalk. The, the eight-foot bike path will continue down Industrial Park Boulevard to connect to 99th Street. There's also a .43-acre General Park rest area located at the southeast corner, and generally will include exercise equipment, a seating area, a pavilion, a bike maintenance area, and a community planting area. There's also, as a requirement from Indian River County, there's an existing force main that crosses under Schuman, under the FEC railroad tracks. We are, at the county's request, we are upsizing that from a four inch to an eight inch, and we're listing that as public benefit, the developer's not asking for any reimbursement for those costs, they're going to do that all on their own. As part of the requests for the PUD approval, we're also asking for a few waivers from the RS-10 and RM-8 zoning criteria for the lot sizes. I apologize, the formatting of this slide got a little bit, a little bit sideways, but to be clear, the waivers that we're requesting are minimum lot width, RS-10, the minimum is 80 feet, they're requesting 50 feet. The minimum yard setback for the RS-10 and the RM-8 would be going from 10 feet to 5 feet. The open space requirement attributed to the, allowable for the pond is typically 30%. We're requesting 50%. And the maximum building coverage on each lot, we're requesting for both the single-family and paired villa lots to be at 56%. That concludes our presentation. Happy to answer any questions or requests for additional information that can, that may come up. Thank you.
Alright, thank you very much. Ms. Bosworth?
So, this is step three of this process, to, to rezone and get into future land use. If you remember, there was, just a quick summary, because tonight is the request for the rezoning. Our code requires, our land development code, that if you ask for a PUD zoning district designation, it is, comes with an approval of a conceptual plan with that PUD-R zoning designation. Earlier in the year, there was 1987 mishap with the annexation of Industrial Park Boulevard, and that has been, so we've annexed in the portion of that road that did, that missed it from that 1987 ordinance. In September, you heard the first request of the land use. Currently is land used, the land use is mixed use, and they are requesting to go back to a low-density residential. You heard that first reading in September, it has been sent off to the state, and we've scheduled the second hearing, an adoption hearing for December 3rd. This is first reading tonight of this rezoning, we're also requesting that the second reading be scheduled for December 3rd. So, December 3rd, all of these pieces will come together, final adoption, with the new land use and the new zoning. So, Mr. Vitter hit a lot of points and explanations about the subdivision in his presentation. I'm just going to go over some of the requirements that our code, kind of notes that you should include in your consideration. Comp plan consistency, this is for the rezoning portion of their request. There is future land use, level of service, there's some items listed on page three and four of our staff analysis. Staff does feel that they meet this comprehensive plan consistency consideration. Regarding level of service, with traffic, with the amount of homes that are coming in, there's an estimated 1,617 additional daily trips from this subdivision. However, there are peak, peak hours when that's, that will, with those daily trips there are. They are meeting the code of two entrances, that the code requires. Their main entrances, both of them are going to be open, they're not an emergency access, they will be open. That is Industrial Park Boulevard to the south, and Essex Lane to the north. Now, with the preliminary plat, if this process of the subdivision gets approved, the preliminary plat, the city engineer will be thoroughly reviewing the traffic impact analysis that this subdivision would require, and at that point, she will work with the developer on what type of improvements to Essex Lane. Right now, it's a substandard road, so we know there's definitely going to be some improvement to that, but if there needs to be a turn lane, width of the sidewalks, that'll be all coming in with the preliminary plat if this is approved. With regards to our process with the PUD process, in consideration for some of those waivers that they are requesting, they're, with, through the negotiation, they have offered up those public amenities regarding the public park and the upsizing to the, to the water, the water, sewer line, excuse me. The, now, we always, we had to make sure that they met the minimum recreation requirement, so some of the items that they are presenting are above and beyond. The, what we're looking for and what they're offering is the, interconnectivity was important to us to, from this subdivision. They are offering, it's going to be a 30-foot wide tract along the railroad tracks, we're going to, there'll be an eight-foot wide bike path through that with landscaping on either side. The plan that you have does show that bike path to the western portion of that. We'd like to work with them and get that a little bit more centered, so we have landscaping on both side. They're proposing to put up an eight-foot wall also. We'd like that kind of moved to the most eastern side of that, and that's, that'd be the property line that's adjacent to the railroad tracks. See, they are going to have, with that .43 acre, they'll be doing some community, public benches, water fountains, exercise equipment, there'll be a, a, excuse me, gazebo there, covered seating area. We have reviewed the environmental assessment report. Originally, they were not going to, the area around the lake was not going to be regraded, and because of that, and because of the sand mining, as you reach the edge of the water, there was a deep drop-off. So, our request for some of our environmental LID and, like, natural zone plantings, because of that drop-off, we weren't kind of pressing that, but they have since come back, they are going to regrade that and get that slope into the water a little bit more manageable. And as such, we are then requesting, as one of our conditions of approval, to possibly get a little bit more littoral and native preservation plantings along the lake. From, I don't know if you looked at the sheets from the conceptual plan, as you can see, there'll be the rear property line, there is a lake maintenance around that on these lots, and then there is an area that will be ungraded, ungrasped, kind of just in a natural preservation area down to the lake, to, to the slope, kind of to get that, keep that natural, in a natural state. I just wanted to quickly go over, we, Planning and Zoning Commission on October 9th reviewed this, the plans. I just want to quickly go over, I know there's eight of them, but these are the, these are the recommended conditions of approval for, that they've reviewed, and kind of from our considerations. These are noted in the ordinance. You could look at this as kind of their developer's agreement at this stage, at the conceptual plan. Certainly, when we get to the preliminary plat, if there's some additional conditions of approval, more specific to the preliminary plat, those certainly can be added at the preliminary plat time. So, staff, the Planning and Zoning Commission had recommended at their, with the, that, to, excuse me, unanimously voted to forward a favorable recommendation to city council to approve the requested zoning and to approve the conceptual development plan with the following conditions, which are included in your ordinance. The, the public amenities shown on the plan are dedicated to the public, and they shall be, they will be maintained by the HOA. We also wanted that the public amenities to be completed before the subdivision certificate completion. So, this isn't something that will be built after the houses are built, we need this upfront before the certificate of completion for the subdivision is granted, or any phase of that. Any other, the other recreational tracks that are within that subdivision have to be completed before 25% of the residential units of the subdivision are, have received their certificate of occupancy. So, if they phase this through the preliminary plat, or if they do all 180, 25% of those residential units would have to be completed, excuse me, the recreational, private recreational amenities would have to be completed before any other certificates of completion, certificate of occupancy are issued. We will work with them with the final location of the shared use bike path. Formal landscaping plans will be required with the preliminary plat, and the proposed wall within the eastern landscape buffer shall not be higher than eight feet, including any berm or raised grading, and shall be located closest to the eastern bounding line. The offsite improvements to Essex and Concord Avenue will be in accordance with the city's accepted design standards and in working with the city engineer and public works director. The final plat shall dedicate an access. Industrial Park Boulevard is going to be a private drive, but there are some businesses along that drive, so there is a recorded easement already, but we would like that to be a formal dedication on the final plat, that the public can use that for access to those businesses from that private drive. Separate site plans are required for the, any of the recreational tracks and the model homes. There is, they're short a little bit of the guest parking spaces for the townhouses, we will make sure that that's shown on the preliminary plat. And, any, after any proposed regrading along the shore, lake line, it will, shall remain in a natural state, and with the preliminary plat, they'll provide us some sort of landscaping for littoral zones and native plantings along the lake, that'll come in with the preliminary plat. The environmental report did note that there was some least turn areas that could be viable for them, and there is a certain time of the year that if you're going to be clearing, they're required to check for those, and again, that's a condition of approval number eight, that if it is clearing during that time, that we, we get that report from them. Staff recommends approval.
Alright, thank you so much, Ms. Bosworth. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Do the applicant have anything final before we go to deliberations? Nothing? Alright, public input's closed. You know, this is a project that it looks like the staff and the developer and everybody involved has worked well together to get where we are, and some of the things that are in here is just simply amazing, and also our P and Z, I want to thank them for going through this and adding a lot more to this. So, all of this stuff is going to protect the city. Ms. Matthews was on that board when they made this decision to pass it up to us, and if you would like to share anything on that, Ms. Matthews, you go ahead now.
No, sir, thank you.
No, sir, thank you. Mayor, I think it's, you know, we did really well. I just wanted to, I did want to ask, make sure that we're still removing the gates. We're still at that phase. We're not going back to that, correct?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And then the parking is not only going to be for the villas, but we're going to work on the parking for the recreation area as well? Or is that established?
Correct. As part of that preliminary plat approval, we'll show parking for those recreation areas in addition to the required guest parking for the paired villas as well.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Just a dot?
Dory, the waivers that we have to do.
Well, they're not necessarily waivers at this point. The way the PUDR zoning district states is that, what does it say? Dimensional criteria shall be negotiated. So they're not really asking for waivers. And that's the plus, if you can look at it as a PUD zoning, is it does give you some flexibility. So it's not like they're coming in with RS 10 zoning and needing some waivers. They're not asking for the RS or the straight residential zoning. It's a PUD that allows you this flexibility to come up with some creative designs. We just kind of pinpoint it, we kind of put it in a table form, note it for you on what they're looking for. If it's only one or two things, we might not request so many amenities or additional pluses for the subdivision. And this is kind of on average on what a normal PUD asks for. Probably the biggest one is the lake size. So our code says that you can only use, this is a 58-acre lake, 85-acre lake. They're requiring, our code requires that technically you can only use 30% of that towards your open space. So they're asking for 50%. So that's an additional 20 or some acres towards open space that they're asking kind of for consideration for. And in exchange of that, we're getting a little, way more public recreational amenities than we would, than the minimum requires.
Yeah, I don't necessarily have an issue with it. I'm just that, so at the final plat, as part of the PUD process, the setbacks will be established on the final plat and so forth. We don't have to go through a separate process of approving waivers on it.
You're establishing them through this. If by approving the conceptual development plan, you're establishing them with this approval. They'll be shown on the preliminary plat. So there probably will be a detail on one of the sheets that kind of gives a summary or kind of a visual section detail of how that will look on each of those lots. But you are approving those setbacks through the approval of this conceptual plan.
Okay, they're not one of the eight items that we're approving with this ordinance, though. They're not listed in item 1 through 8, the setback.
No, those are just recommended conditions of approval, but approval of the plan, you are establishing those setbacks, because they do note those on one of the sheets of the conceptual plan. They've laid out what setbacks will be.
Okay, that's, okay. All right, I'm fine.
If we had to, if we had to put all of those details into the ordinance.
We would have to go through a different process if we were doing a commercial lot in a building and so forth than this. So, but I'm fine with it. The setback changes are not an issue. I just want to make sure that I know where the approval process comes through. And you're saying we do that with the final plat, and we've done that here. They've actually laid those out here, and we've done.
Yeah, there's a paragraph in the ordinance, there's a paragraph in the ordinance that references the date and this conceptual plan, and that's what approves those setbacks.
Thank you, guys.
All right, anyone else? Mr. Nunn? Nope. Mr. Benton?
I have a question. Dory, can you provide some clarification for me? Because I believe we've discussed this, and I saw it twice now. Tonight during the presentation by the applicant, it referenced that the public bike path was going to be dedicated to the city. And then it also shows that on page 179. In our discussions, the maintenance of the bike path is going to be the responsibility of the HOA.
Yes, so if there's any, if there's any non-consistencies in anything, the intent is, is that that whole 30-foot tract will be dedicated to, for public use. The HOA will maintain both the landscaping and the sidewalk.
Okay, the HOA is maintaining the sidewalk and the landscaping.
Yes.
I just wanted on the record.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And that's in perpetuity?
That will be, now that's a dedication that will show on the final plat. So when we get the final plat, the milers, the sign, there's going to be a dedication of, when the preliminary plat comes in, if it's tract A, it'll say tract A is dedicated to the public for use and benefit of the city of Sebastian and will be maintained by the HOA. So it'll be a formal dedication on the plat that will then be recorded at the courthouse, which would be different. We could require it in the HOA documents, but those can be changed down the road. This on the plat would not then change unless they come in to replat.
Yeah, that's an item, that's an item B of your eight things. Item B says it dedicated that, and it'll be maintained by the HOA. And if they don't maintain it, then the city can come in and take care of it.
Yes.
So what would happen if the HOA was dissolved? Where would that responsibility fall then for those paths, the landscaping that's maintained by the HOA?
That's a good question. I'd have to defer to an HOA attorney. I don't know what would happen there if it did dissolve.
Our position would be that, and that's the benefit of putting it in the plat instead of the HOA docs, because if the HOA was to dissolve, those docs would no longer be enforceable. Being in the plat, it's attached to the property, so that dedication would still be there.
Okay.
That would be the city's position if that ever arose.
Very good.
And just so we're understanding, that everything within this community falls under the responsibility of the HOA, including all the roads, the landscaping, the sidewalks, the, anything that's designated to as public as well as personal. And the dog park is still private, correct? It's not going public as well?
That's correct.
So that's, that's everything that's common area?
Yes.
Except for the, well, not except, but just to note, the improvements to Essex Lane, which is the north entrance, there's a short road that'll go connect to Schuman Drive. That is still a public road. It's already been dedicated to the city. They're going to do some off-site improvements. They may need to widen it. I don't know if they've gotten curb and gutter design. There's going to be a sidewalk. They'll do the improvements, but that still then will be maintained by the city, because it already is our road. Now, if they wanted to do any type of landscaping, beautification to that road right away, put up an off-site subdivision sign, they would need to come before you guys through a license to encroach. And at that point, that would be worked out on who's going to maintain that landscaping and the signage. But that would be a license to encroach. But Essex Lane still remains the city's street to take care of.
Mr. Mayor, this has been through a lot of evaluations, and the developer has done everything that they've said they were going to do, I think, in the communication with the city staff. So I move approval of ordinance number, what's the number? Oh, 2505.
Second.
And set the second reading for?
And set the second reading for December the 3rd.
And I amend my second today. All right. So do you have any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McPartland.
Yes.
Councilmember Nunn.
Yes.
And Councilmember Matthews.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much. I would like to say thank you to Dory and Alex. We've been working on the property for many years and navigated a lot of hurdles, so I appreciate all their hard time and hard work on it.
Yeah, and thank you all for working well with our staff. We really appreciate that. Thank you. All right, next we have is, what do we have? Item 16B, first reading and consideration of ordinance number O-25-16. Mr. Essotan, oh, Mrs. Stokes?
If I could read it in first. An ordinance of the city of Sebastian, Florida, amending the code of ordinances of the city of Sebastian by amending Chapter 26, Buildings and Building Regulation, Article 6, Contractors, amending Section 26-161, definitions, removing obsolete definitions, adding definition for handyman services, adding HVAC to journeyman definition, relocating specialty contractors definition, and definition for state-registered, amending Section 26-164, amending the title of Section 26-164 to read preemptions/exemptions, adding preemptions per Florida Statute 163.211 and exemptions per Florida Statutes 489.103, amending Section 26-165, stipulating that persons engaged in the business of contracting shall be licensed in one of the licensed categories as set forth by Florida statutes and the Department of Business and Professional Regulations, providing for codification, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for Scrivners errors, and providing for an effective date.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Ms. Wayne?
Yes, thank you, counsel. On May 29, 2024, the Florida Legislature enacted a Senate Bill 1142, which preempting local licensing requirements with certain exceptions. Florida Statute 163.211 has preempted occupational licensing to the state, which supersedes any local government licensing requirements, and stipulates that local licensing is not authorized. The city currently has a list of contractor trades from a 1996 resolution. The Florida Statute 49.1174A1 was amended to allow municipalities to regulate local contractors who licenses areas that substantially correspond with state contractor license categories. Staff prepared a summary of the local license category changes, showing which of these existing license categories substantially correspond to the state mandated license categories pursuant to Florida Statute 489. Staff has also compiled a list of definitions for each contractor license categories for those license categories that were found in Florida statute and Florida administrative code, and those will be made available to the public and be posted on our website as well as the building department. The active locally licensed contractors in the city of Sebastian affected by these changes will all be notified. So it's necessary to update the city code of ordinance, Chapter 26, Building, Building Regulations, Article 6, Contractors, to comply with Florida statutes. Specifically, the ordinance, the contractor licensing definitions that may be in conflict with those in Florida statute, Florida administrative code, were removed. Contractor licensing preemption and exemptions found in Florida statutes were added. Stipulations were added that states' persons engaged in the business of contracting shall be licensed in one of the licensed categories set forth by Florida statute and the Department of Business and Professional Regulation. So basically, the state is taking local licensed contracting, which was not consistent throughout various municipalities and counties, and has compiled a list of categories. They've added some specialty license categories in an effort to try to keep things uniform and limiting what a local government can do as far as licensing. So a lot of it is just renaming, taking existing categories and renaming them when they substantially correspond to one of the state licenses. So therefore, the people that already have these licenses can continue on. There is a few exceptions, and it was listed in the, in their changes where some of the categories did not substantially correspond. Those will no longer be renewed or registered as a license holder, and they will not be required to. If for some reason those particular contractors have to obtain a permit, they would have to have a different type of license that would allow them to pull the permit. But looking at that list, honestly, there's not too many that would be affected by that. I think in all, in our impact statement, we had like 26 contractors that are active with us right now, that we would have to notify that their license would no longer continue as such. We did go over this in detail with the Sebastian Construction Board on November 10th meeting. The construction board unanimously recommended approval of city council for ordinance O-25-16.
All right, thank you, sir. Anybody else from staff? If there are anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Anyone on Zoom?
No one has raised their hand.
Hearing none, public input's closed. Counsel, any questions?
I just had a couple of cosmetic updates. I don't know. It's on 247 in mind, but it's where it says contractor on the second, sorry, maybe third. But it says contractor means any person who engages in business under expressed or implied contract. The next, the part of that, in any of the trades is defined in this article. We maybe just omit that, because we're kind of deleting all those trades underneath that.
Right.
Just delete that little bit of space, so it would actually read expressed or implied contract or undertakes or offers to undertake those. And then on the next page, and this is just, again, it's all cosmetic, where it has HVAC, if you would just define it out, and then the HVAC is, because it's a.
Yes, that was basically copied right out of the statutes, and they don't really define it, but we can.
Okay. And then on the next one, where it's Florida administrative, just add the word code, so we're know what we're working with.
Right.
And then testing agencies, I believe, maybe?
Yes.
And then, I'm not sure what the rest of that sentence is supposed to. I don't know if we can stop at the word trade and then diminish which is administered by the testing agent. I don't, I'm not sure what that's, what you're trying to, what that's trying to imply. I don't, the which is administered by testing. We've already, you've already discussed that at the top part of it.
Right. I agree. We can fix that. We can clean that up for a second reading.
Okay. I'm good with it.
Very good. Anything else? All right.
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of ordinance O-25-16 with the cosmetic changes that were applied with a second reading on December 3, 2025.
I second that.
So you have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Call it, Madam Clerk?
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Vice Mayor McPartland.
Yes.
Councilmember Nunn.
Yeah.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yes.
And Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to item 16C, consideration of Resolution Number R-25-47. Like musical chairs.
So earlier this evening, you approved in the CRA meeting, accepting the FDEP grant, LG 024. This would be for the conversion from septic to sewer for the entire CRA. So this resolution just accepts the grant agreement and allows us to execute that with FDEP.
All right, thank you. Any other staff? Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Anyone on Zoom?
No one has raised their hand.
Hearing none, public input's closed. Counsel, wish your pleasure. Move approval of Resolution R 2547. You have a motion? Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, second by Vice Mayor McPartland. Let's see where we are. I think we can do this by consensus, right? Mr. Stokes, do we have to?
There's money in it.
Yeah, okay. Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Vice Mayor McPartland.
Yes.
Councilmember Nunn.
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
And Mayor Jones.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, item 16D, Delta, consideration of Resolution Number R-25-46.
Mr. Mayor, good evening. Back in front of you again with the same item that was approved at the CRA board. This time, we are asking for approval from city council. Again, we're looking to enter into a piggyback agreement with Meeks Plumbing, as well as issue a purchase order not to exceed 1.5 million for utility service labor to complete the connection, the CRA connection from septic to sewer.
All right, thank you very much. Anybody else from staff? Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Not in the audience, how about Zoom?
Not at this time.
All right, public input's closed. Counsel, it's our pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of Resolution Number R-25-46.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Nunn.
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews.
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd.
Yes.
Mayor Jones.
Yes.
And Vice Mayor McPartland.
Yes.
All right, next item we have is item 16E, Echo, consideration of Resolution Number R-25-45. Mr. Sabo.
Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is a resolution to accept.
Oh, do you? Hang on, Jeff. Mrs. Stokes, do you need to read anything on this, or it's not necessary?
No, this is a resolution.
Okay, good.
One more time.
One more.
There we go. All right, great. Sorry. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, this is requesting your consideration of Resolution R 2545 for FDOT grant agreement listed there. This is funds for the engineering and design phase of taxiway golf. This is funds for the engineering and design phase of Taxiway Golf Apron Phase 1. This apron will be adjacent to the Taxiway Golf project that is currently under construction out at the airport. This is looking ahead towards the next phase of the northwest development at the airport to provide an apron area, not only for parking, but for eventual building of hangars to adjoining this area for service to get aircraft in and out of the new properties that will be available along this apron. We're only doing this in phases right now because of the potential cost. The length of this, I'm not certain. We're going to shoot for, depending on the design phase and what FDOT will negotiate with us in January, to run anywhere from 700 to 1,000 or more feet to get this project started and make more use out of the Taxiway Golf project as soon as possible.
All right, thank you so much, sir. Anybody else from staff? No? All right, is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? All right, seeing none. Do we have anyone on Zoom?
No, at this time.
Public input is closed. Council, wish your pleasure.
Mr. Mayor, move approval of resolution number R-25-45.
Do we have a motion?
I'll second that.
And second? Any discussion? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item F, Mr. Sabo?
We'll see if this helps. Procurement manager is going to join me on this. This project is to cover a change order, this item and the item to follow, for an expansion on the current Taxiway Golf project. We had originally gone to the FDOT to ask them to encompass the area in question and actually begin the apron project that I just mentioned to you. Initially, we got a positive response, but after some further deliberation, he came back and denied our request and instead have allowed us the grant to begin planning the very same thing. We had hoped to try and keep this underneath the same project to reduce cost to both the city and the state while everything was mobilized, but that just didn't happen. So what we're doing now, we've gone back, and we want to stabilize this extra area that is going to become an apron, but protect it as much as possible relative to Taxiway Golf. This is going to be a brand-new surface for aircraft to operate on. The adjoining area in question that is going to be involved in this amendment to the CSA number 14, along with the following item, was to stabilize this ground, get it covered again, put a minimum amount of asphalt on it to keep it from moving and getting further destroyed in case we were to have another hurricane response involving FPL and all the trucks that come out for that, along with just protecting anything from the weather, along with sand, wind, rain, and the like from obstructing the brand-new taxiway. These costs involved here are strictly for infrastructure and consulting engineering, one of our retained engineering firms that we use out at the airport, and this is to cover their additional cost in making sure that this part of the project is done properly.
All right, Ms. Benton?
Yeah, I just want to add one thing to this, just in case the question comes up. So if you look down at the funding source on page 426 for this and the next item that we're discussing, originally, in our budgeting documents, we had budgeted 1.975 million dollars for this project. The cost estimate came in significantly less than that, somewhere in the range of 900,000 to a million dollars. So there was a big cost savings there, and if you look under the funding source, it shows we had originally allocated 395,040 in discretionary sales tax. We've only encumbered 207,890.75 of that. So the expenditures we're requesting tonight with this proposed change order, we do have sufficient funding still left in this project underneath discretionary sales tax funding to cover this cost. So this is not a usage of reserve funds. It's not a usage of any other funding mechanism on this item. It is, it still does fall underneath the DST funding that we had allocated to the project. And that's, I just wanted to clarify that.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Anyone on Zoom?
No, at this time.
All right, hearing none, public input is closed. Do we have questions from council?
Step one, Brian, is the construction cost on this, this is for engineering, is the construction cost on this in this same budget cycle? Is that part of this original 1975? Once it goes from engineering to construction?
On this project here specifically, they've started construction already on the major project, the Taxiway Golf. The construction has started. So the idea behind this was to get this stabilization area completed while they still had the contractor on site to minimize mobility cost and the additional cost associated with that.
Yeah, so there's going to be construction of the stabilization area once the engineering's done on that, right?
Yeah, so it all will happen concurrently really quickly. If you look at their cost estimates for engineering, design, and inspection, I think it was a total of about a week's worth of time. So the whole project, including this area, if it's improved tonight, will be done by the end of December in that timeframe.
Okay, so we're not going to get an additional item later for the construction work on this stabilization?
That construction work is the next item.
That's the next item, sir.
It's under 77,000.
Yeah, okay. I got my own questions on that one, too, so.
Okay. All right, anything else from staff?
No, sir, thank you.
It always scares me when something that we think is going to cost $2 million comes out at $800,000. That's a scary thing.
All right, are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of item 16F.
Got a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second by Councilmember Nun. Any other deliberations? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
And Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, this is the one you're looking for, Mr. Dodd, the next one, the change order. This is, what are we on? Item G. All right, so consideration of change order, number one, in the amount of 77,166. Mr. Sabo?
I'll defer to the procurement manager to get a start on this.
Okay, Ms. Graham, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on this item, the first thing I'm going to say is that the contractor is not asking for an increase in price. The city went to the contractor to ask for an increase in the scope of services. So I know the last time I was up here and we were awarding it, I said 882,000 was the amount that was correct. They did not come back to us and ask for a increase. We went to them because we are adjusting the scope of services. So as Mr. Sabo has pointed out, we tried, because we had additional funds, to have a larger project approved by FDOT, but they declined that. So we scaled it back so that we can work on the portion that we need to work on, which is stabilizing an area next to the taxiway, which is actually going to be the Gulf apron. So we are just looking to stabilize that area. We reached out to the contractor. They provided quotes to us, and I do want to point out that the city will be responsible for paying 56,570.88 of the project, because the southern area will be funded by FDOT at 80%. The northern area, because that is outside the scope of work on our grant, the city is responsible for paying that 51,000 that it will cost to have that work done there. And as Mr. Benton pointed out, we do still have discretionary funds to take care of this project. And again, we are asking for the change order. I'm sure there are questions, so I'll let you guys get to those.
All right, thank you so much. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Anyone on Zoom?
No, at this time.
All right, hearing none, public input is closed. Mr. Dodd?
Well, my primary question is that this area was destabilized by FPNL using it during a response to a hurricane. Have we applied to FEMA to get reimbursed for this work?
Well, I don't know necessarily that all of the damage, they run trucks where the area is kind of combined with the apron and taxiway, but it was a, it was an old runway that has just been dilapidated for many, many years. So I don't know that we could, we could sit here and pinpoint that it was hurricane response that played the part in this, more so as it's just over time, the, yes, the increase in truck weight, all that has played a part in it, but I don't know that it's necessarily, we can point the finger on them for the damage that was caused.
I'm just going by what's in here, where it says that that's what caused it, so. Yeah, the other, the other thing is that we have applications for grants for this, for some of the stabilization. If they were approved, is the city going to get reimbursed for some of their expenses, additional expenses on this?
At this point, I have made a request to FDOT to, Jessica, explain the fact that the part of this area is the responsibility of FDOT already. The city's brunt of this at 51,422 is the northern side, which is the other half of that runway footprint. FDOT, I'm dealing with the situation right now that they are in the midst of a staffing change and communication has been very limited. I have made the request to see if we can make this entire area come back as an 80/20 share with the state. I'm still hopeful on that, but I have not heard anything as of yet. My latest communication was yesterday. At this point, the consideration was to try and to get this in and cover it before we get in a situation where we're asking the contractor to re-mobilize and add even more additional cost to the project.
That's a good, that's a good point. All right, unless somebody's got something else, I move approval of whatever this is, resolution. Yep. I just move approval, there's nothing there.
All right, a second? All right, so we have a motion and a second. Do we have any further questions or anything from council? Hearing none. Madam Clerk?
Um.
This is change order number one in the amount of 77.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, that moves us on to item 16H, as in hotel, consideration of an assignment of change of name of lease for 600 Airport Drive. Mr. Sabo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item is basically a request by an existing tenant for a name change under the lease that they already have in place for the parcel that we identify as 600 Airport Drive West. This company, the investors and the owners of this company have had some internal changes. They're looking ahead towards their future planning and what they're going to be doing on the airport in our next item here, and have requested to change the name from Blackbrook Group to now the new name of Hayburn Asset Management LLC. And this way, both this parcel and the new parcel that we'll be considering will be underneath their new corporate name.
Very good. You have anything else from staff? Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Anyone on Zoom?
No, at this time.
Hearing none, public input is closed, council.
Move approval of item 16H.
There you go. Thank you, sir. Do we have a motion by Vice Mayor?
I'll second it.
And second? All right, good. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Vice Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
And Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, very good. We're moving on to item 16I, India. Mr. Sabo?
Again, Mr. Mayor and council, this is a continuation for a request of a new lease by Hayburn Asset Management, who we just spoke about. Current tenant that had 600 Airport Drive West, they are now asking to lease a larger parcel, which is adjacent to that first parcel, named 605 Corporate Park Drive. These are side by side despite the different names. These will both go together, and there's a preliminary exhibit that was included with the packet that shows their intention to add their own taxi lane.
Take a break.
To make use of this property to build anywhere from two to four hangars, depending on the size and the site plan work involving stormwater and other items such as that. This is, this tenant is already using a small office in the terminal building. They have plans for significant expansion. They run a charter business. They also do aircraft management for several different clients and wish to increase their footprint, bring some more jobs and revenue to the Sebastian area and airport.
That's it?
That's it, sir.
All right, anything else from staff? Hearing none. Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? Anyone on Zoom?
No, at this time.
Public input is closed. Council?
Mr. Mayor, move approval of the new lease for Hayburn Asset Management LLC. Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Anything else? Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
And Vice Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Mayor, can we take a break?
All right, yes, sir, we can. We're going to take a five-minute break and come right back, so we're adjourned for five minutes. We're getting started. All right, um, council meeting is back in order. We're on item sixteen J. Here we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. I'll start us off and just go over the procurement items, then I'll turn it over to Mr. Blankenship. So I'm asking for, to consider a purchase order as well as a, um, sorry, a purchase order for Playworks Playsets LLC for seventy-five thousand four hundred fifty-three dollars and eight cents. This is to replace the playground equipment at Hardy Park, and we are using a purchase, uh, I'm sorry, a, um, oh, it is late. We are using a cooperative contract that we already have in place. It is with Little Tykes Commercial Dash Play Power, and Playworks is a dealer of the Little Tykes Commercial Dash Play Power contract. So we're purchasing it through Sourcewell. We are a Sourcewell vendor, and I will just turn it over to Mr. Blankenship in case he has any information about the, um, playground equipment.
Good evening, counsel. Richard Blankenship, Parks and Recreation. Um, just to note, this, um, design increases the footprint of the playground at Hardy Park. It added, it adds, um, what we refer to as spring animals, not necessarily animals, spring apparatus, and, um, ADA accessibility and an ADA swing seat. Um, with that, I'll, I'll answer any questions you may have.
All right. Um, thank you very much for that presentation, sir. Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item? Are you seeing, um, no one in the audience? Um, how about Zoom?
No, at this time.
Um, public input is closed. Um, you know, I'd like to say, you know, I watched the, um, Parks and Recreation, how they went through this process and going through deciding as this. Were there any changes made to this from that board meeting till now?
No.
No? Okay. All right, um, counsel, what's your pleasure?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion by Councilmember Nun to approve. Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, second by Councilmember Dodd. Uh, anything else? Anyone needs? Uh, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
And Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, um, item sixteen K Kilo, um, consider, consideration of, um, monitoring schedule for the Indian River County Commission meetings. Yes, everybody had the opportunity to look at that, because...
Who's doing December?
December? Let's see.
I think I did November, but who's, who's doing December?
No.
Okay. Do we have that over there? Who would, what's the, um, what page is that?
Five forty-one.
Five forty-one?
I ain't got no names on it, though.
Okay.
I'm just thinking if, if whoever's doing December, just go down the line from them and start January, February, March, April.
Uh, December. Um, I'll do December.
No, he means who's on December now.
Oh, I don't know. I'll do it.
It's already assigned to somebody, December is.
I don't know about that. I've been going to most of them anyway, so I don't, I don't have a problem.
Watch most of them.
Bob's there too.
Okay, Fred, then you get to do all of them. How's that?
There you go. That sounds good. Second.
I move, I move the mayor attends all of those meetings.
Well, you better rethink this one, man. This is not happening that way. I'm sorry for that.
That's all right.
Who's doing November?
I was in November.
Oh, Ed was November?
Yeah.
You want to just go down the line from there?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But December, December of twenty-five, who's doing that? Because I think they're already assigned or were already assigned.
Yeah, someone was already assigned to it. We'll follow up with that member. I don't have it in front of me right now.
Okay, well.
Yeah, I don't have it either, so.
It may have been Miss Dick, uh, Miss Dixon, so nobody's...
No, she, she was in the summer time. She took some of the months.
Okay, so whoever's got...
Probably me, though.
However you want to do it.
Does anybody have a cho, have months that they really want to do it or can't do it?
Just flow down the line.
Okay, so let's just...
Yeah, so we're going to start and then...
We'll just go...
Councilmember Matthews will do it in December?
No, no, no.
No, we'll start January, January.
You're talking about December twenty-five, right?
Okay.
Yep, so let's go...
Forget December. I'll, I'll cover it if we have an issue with it.
Councilmember Matthews in January.
I'll take January.
Okay. Vice Mayor McPartland, February. Mayor Jones, March. Councilmember Nun, April. Councilmember Dodd, May. And then, um, Councilmember Matthews, June. There are no meetings in July.
I'll take that month.
I skipped it. I, I'd already looked. I already skipped it. Vice Mayor, August. Mayor, September. Councilmember Nun, October. Councilmember Dodd, November. And Councilmember Matthews, December.
All right, and so we have that resolved.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, we're going to move on to item L, consideration of an addendum to the City Manager and City Clerk's Employment Contract. Mr. Benton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Jeanette was going to handle this item tonight, but uh, we'll just all keep, keep hearing our thoughts and prayers as we go forward.
Absolutely.
Um, so this, uh, this is an item that we had previously had a, a general discussion on the dais in regards to the new employee pension plan that was established. Um, myself and the city clerk, um, do want to participate in that plan. Uh, I think we, you know, we've kind of had plenty of discussions with our employees about the plan and how great the, the new plan is going to be for employees, and I think it, it kind of sets a precedence that we, we should be involved in that same employee plan as well. Um, as you all are aware, the nature of our contracts, um, and, and the ability of, you know, a consensus of council to, um, without cause, uh, terminate employment agreements with the charter officers. Um, what we are requesting is that, um, for the duration of the term, that we are not vested, um, within, with this, within the new plan, that the city continue to contribute nine percent, um, to a four fifty-seven deferred compensation plan for us, so that that's where we'll see the addendum here. Allows us to participate in the new plan, and the nine percent gets, you know, a contribution towards, uh, deferred compensation plan. And if you all have any questions, I am available.
Right, because you're only vested until you get five years. You're not vested until you get five years in the plan?
Correct. So no one, so no one in our plan will be vested until, uh, October first of twenty thirty.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I, I think that it's a good thing to do because, I mean, as we've seen some other, um, entities recently, city managers and city, well, actually, in two thousand twenty, our city manager and our city attorney weren't very protected, except we've managed to get a civil court tell us that that wasn't correct. Uh, but I do recommend a change to this because the objective here, I believe, is that we would like to see them in our city's, uh, employee pension plan, but we want to make sure that they are protector, they feel like they're protected for the five-year window in which they're not vested, because they are, um, they are at the mercy of a council, and we've all seen here in Sebastian specifically, what can happen when the council doesn't have any mercy. So, um, uh, I would like to recommend that, at the, where it says nine percent, uh, of the city manager's base salary, I'd like to, to add to that a clause that says for each year, the city manager is not vested in the city's employment retirement plan. And, and we'll do the same thing for the city attorney's contract. So basically what that's saying is it will contribute the nine percent for any year in which a city manager is not vested in that retirement plan.
And the city clerk?
If for some reason Brian decides to leave and we hire a new city manager, we would do the same thing for that new city manager. Um, we would want them to join that retirement plan, and then we would contribute money, uh, assuming that, that we could work that out, whether we contribute money for the non-vested period.
This for the city clerk as well, correct?
Well, I, I, I believe right now our current clerk is, is wanting to stay with her original contract. Um, uh, we'd have to get her when she's able to talk with us about that.
No, she did. She wants to change it to this.
Did she?
This agenda item is for both of us?
For both of them, yeah. She wants to change it as well.
If, if that happens, the change in the near future, then we can add that discussion, but as of the agenda filing, it was this.
The city clerk is on the back of that page.
Oh, I'm, I'm, I've got pages stuck together.
Oh.
So the same thing would apply to the city clerk, yes.
Mr. Benton, is that good?
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Uh, and that's what we had discussed. I don't know, you know, it's only for that five years, um, up until October first of twenty thirty, so I'm more than happy to change the language, um, to state that it, it is only during unvested years, um, until, until we become vested. So we'll make that change.
And I'll, I'll move approval of these two contract modifications pending that change.
Pending that change, second. All right, do we have any other discussion on this item?
Public.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak on this? Anyone on Zoom?
No, at this time.
Hearing none. Public input is closed. Counsel? Did we make the motion? We didn't make the motion. All right. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McPartland?
Yes.
Councilmember Nun?
Yes.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
And Councilmember Dodd?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, thank you so much. All right, now we're going to move on to item M, as in Mary. City Council Discussion and Direction on City Attorney Vacancy.
So, uh, Mr. Mayor, I'll get this started. We have Cindy Watson, who's our Human Resources Director here, to kind of answer any specific questions that you may have. Um, however, you all had provided direction to the HR Department to advertise the, uh, city attorney position. Um, that position was advertised, um, with an initial closing date of October thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. However, um, it was opened back up for an extension, uh, to allow any potential other candidates to apply, uh, based on the number of applicants we had received. So it did get opened back up, uh, or it never formally closed. The, the, the date, just, uh, in our NeoGov system, we continued to accept applications. We had extended that date out. Um, so based on that, by October thirty-first, you had received nine applications for individuals and one firm, um, that was included. And then after that, so the first kind of action we need to take tonight is after that point, when we continued to allow, um, applications based on the number of applicants we'd received, we did receive one additional application. Um, that application has been sent to you all. It was sent to you all once it came in. Um, so you'll have to decide whether you want to consider that individual, um, within your discussion tonight. What we're looking for is, is, um, some direction as we go forward. If you all have had time to review the applicants, if you want to kind of come to a, a consensus on who you would like to interview. If you have not had time, we can bring this back at the next meeting. Um, but that's where we're looking for some direction, or if you've reviewed them and you want to continue to leave the position open, um, for additional applications, we can do that as well. Um, so once that, those decisions are kind of made, number one, whether you want to consider the additional applicant, and then number two, what decision you want to make tonight, and then we can, we can probably have some additional questions after that.
All right, uh, thank you so much, sir. Um, counsel, I'm, I was looking at those, and I know I've read through all of the, um, the applications that we had, and I think we can probably, um, weed it down to three or four or whatever, and then go from there. Um, I, I don't know what your thoughts are on that, because based on what I've read, I'm pretty sure that, um, there's probably about three good ones there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I mean, let, let's, let's pick the easy one to discuss first. Is anybody interested in having a law firm?
No.
I mean, I, I don't think, overall, I mean, I know, I see there's benefits. Financially, there's no benefit. Uh, logistically, there's lots of benefits to the law firm. Um, you know, having more than one lawyer to, to possibly represent you, but the financial side of that kind of makes it unattractive in the long term. Um, so at this point, it seems like even though, while they maybe do a wonderful job for us, they probably could be, you know, taken off the list if they're not fitting what this council wants for a representation of an attorney. Just to take the easy one off the list first.
Right.
I, I myself have went through them all and have a couple, uh, the top couple that I would recommend for interviews.
Who's the one that we just got?
Gene Stasio.
Gene Stasio.
Gene Stasio, yes.
Cynthia Watson?
No.
Oh, Gene Stasio.
He's not on this list. She's not on this list.
But I had it.
Okay, is, is, is everyone interested in including her in the list?
I, I'm, I'm interested in adding Gene Stasio to this list.
Please.
Okay, that's what I wanted to find out, is that we had her name in the list.
Yes, please. Unless anybody disagrees. Very good resume.
All right, so, um, we have, um, at least, we've eliminated the law firm, and I'm sure, um, based on my reading, there's at least four or five in that I would dismiss straight away and not have to worry about going through the process of interviewing those. And like I said, there, there would be probably three now on that list that I would go for to go through the interview process with us. That's just my thoughts.
Well, you want to say your three, and then we'll see if we add anybody?
I'll, I'll go. The name that we just, what was the name again?
Gene Stasio.
Stasio, um, Manny Anon, and John Anastasia.
Say, say the last one.
John Anastasia.
John Anastasia, okay.
I would, uh, like to see John, uh, Gene Stasio and Adam Patton and John Anastasia.
I'm trying to find Adam Patton.
It's almost.
You guys need more time to look over these, or I think we don't need to push it out more. I think we need to come down to a, a number of candidates and then just move forward.
I'd like to see, I'm in agreeance with the mayor, that Anastasio, Anon, and Anastasia, and Gene. Um, I think that city government experience is a, a plus.
Of course, yeah.
Yeah, I think Adam, I mean, I, I was just looking, because I, when, when, uh, the, uh, Councilmember Nun mentioned Adam Patton, I couldn't quite remember the resume. Um, I went back to look at it. His, his primary experience, I, I don't think is in municipal law.
I think it was, you had county.
Yeah.
It was mostly county that what he had.
It's impressive resume, but we're looking for somebody that's got municipal law experience.
Unfortunately, the other ones had no municipal or county.
I think the three that, that they, the mayor talked about, Manny and John and Gene Stasio were the three people that I would agree to.
All right, so I agree that Ed agrees to it.
I agree to that.
All right, so we have a consensus?
No.
No, he's...
Yeah, yeah, I'm going with him.
Yeah?
So, we're choosing three. Yes. Just to kind of clarify what was, what we've, what you all have decided, is that you have narrowed it down to three candidates. John, Jay Anastasio, Manny Anon Jr., and Gene Stasio. John J. Anastasio, Manny Anon Jr. and Gene Stasio.
Yes.
Stasio, I don't know how to say that last name, I apologize.
I don't know.
So now what, what we're going to look to do is obviously, we will have to look at bringing them in for interviews and setting a meeting. How quickly do you all want to do that? How do you want to, we're obviously going into, we've got Thanksgiving coming up, then we've got Christmas the end of December, but I think we probably could fit this in, you know, in a timeframe in December and then have a special meeting later in that day, similar to what you did with the last opportunity.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. I think as soon as we can get started, and I know that Mrs. Stokes is going to be here with us and handling things, but we are looking for a permanent attorney and I think that we shouldn't push this off no longer than we have to. That as soon as we can get these candidates in and interviewed, the better off we're going to be so. I would suggest the first part of December or the second week or something.
So our meetings in December are December 3rd and 17th. Does December 10th, which is that in-between Wednesday work? Oh, I don't, I think one of you might be out.
Yeah, I won't be here December 7th through the 19th.
You know, we can, we can do the interviews. We can, quite frankly, I think unless Mr. Stokes tells us he doesn't want to hang around after the first year for a couple of weeks, we could theoretically push the final decision up to the first week of January, you know, with the Christmas holidays coming up.
Yeah.
I will let you know, I'm committed to being here as long as you need me.
Okay.
I mean, absolutely.
I mean, yeah, I'm going to be gone for two weeks around Christmas. So it's going to be, you know, hard after the 23rd. I'm probably going to leave the night of the 17th meeting and disappear for two weeks. So it's going to be kind of hard to roll that around.
No, that's fine. I mean, that's still moving in in a good timeframe for us, though, if we go into January. So the first part of January.
Maybe we could even think about doing the interviews in December, but it might be even appropriate to try to push that off to January if it's okay with the applicants.
Yeah, so in January, and I'm just looking at Wednesday nights because that's the nights where our area of council, January right now, we're scheduled to meet on the 14th and 28th. So we could do the 7th for interviews during the day and then you would have individual interviews in the morning, then we would have a public interview in the afternoon and then have a special meeting at 5:00 that evening.
I think January 7th would be great.
January 7th, does that work for everyone?
Yeah, because the 28th won't work. I'm bored that day.
You're bored? January 7th.
I said I'm bored that day. I know y'all don't understand what I meant. I got it. So January 7th?
Yep, so that works for Councilmember Dodd. Mayor, does that work for you?
It works for me.
Councilmember None?
All good.
He's good. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, 7th.
Councilmember Matthews?
Yes.
January 7th. Okay, so what we would do is we'll put together a schedule similar to what we did last time.
Yep.
In regards to, I think all of these individuals are local, so I don't think we have to worry about hotel calls or travel. They all are local. So we'll just make a plan to, and I want to make sure you all are in agreement, I don't want to drive this, so I'm just throwing out ideas. That morning, we will set up, you know, start around 9:00. You all will have individual meetings with the three candidates. You'll have specific times. We'll do lunch and then we'll have the public interview portion in the afternoon and then we'll roll right into, we'll set the meetings in the afternoon early enough so that you have an hour or two, a couple hours to think about things and then come back if you wish at 5:00 or 5:01.
Now, similar to last time, do we want to have like a meet and greet the night before with the candidates?
That's completely your call. You know, remember, the attorney represents the city and doesn't provide representation to the public, but that is completely council's call if they want to try to do something like that the night before.
We didn't do that, we didn't do that for the attorney before. We did it for Paul when we hired him as a city manager, but we didn't do it.
We did it for Jennifer.
We didn't do that for Jennifer.
Yeah.
Did we really?
Yeah, we did.
I didn't go to that.
No, yeah, we did it.
Well, it wasn't for Jennifer.
We didn't invite all of them.
I wasn't invited.
Oh, yeah, we definitely had a meet and greet there before.
So, I mean, that's clearly the pleasure of the council. That's, that'll be January, the night of the 6th.
I think we should.
And then, so that would be a, I don't know how that was handled last time.
It comes out of your budget. It comes out of your budget.
But we'll figure it out.
Come out of Park and Recreation.
Yeah, it comes out of Richard's budget.
So real quick, you know, do we want to do something on that night before? Because then we'll have to look at facilities that are available. Where did you all do it last time?
At Hiram's. At Hiram's at the Tiffany Room.
Okay, did you all have food or anything? Or was it, there was food, drinks?
Yeah.
I don't know who arranged all that, do you know?
I.
I think Cindy did.
No, I didn't.
You didn't get it?
It was the city manager.
If you all want to do it, we'll make it happen. I just want to look at the cost associated.
Or maybe we could do it at our civic center or the yacht club there and then you just bring in something.
If it's going to be cheap, but either way, look at the cost of what it's going to cost to do it there.
I don't know if they'd need a lot of food.
Well, I don't know because we're going to be just, and the meet and greet, Anastasio, we've already had a meet and greet with him.
Yeah.
We know Mr. None like that and the only person I don't know is the other one, so.
Okay, that's fine, whatever. If you're going to do it, why don't you do it at our, at our center?
Community Center.
Community Center and have, if you want to bring some food in, maybe have somebody bring a catering thing in or something.
Have Woody's Caterer, they're cheap.
What do you think?
I don't like that.
You don't like that?
No.
No? Okay.
And then whatever's left over, we'll serve for lunch the next day.
All right.
We can put something together.
Okay, Cindy, they'll get something together.
So you want to do the meet and greet the night before?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Correct. And I guess you can come back to us the next meeting with whatever we planned on.
Yes.
Because there's plenty of time.
Yep. We'll have a planning committee. Alex, Cindy.
Okay, don't, don't run over there too fast now.
All right, so we've had, we're down on the agenda, item 17, city attorney matters. Mrs. Stokes?
I do not have anything.
All right, city manager matters, Mr. Benton?
Just a couple items. One, the, as I mentioned earlier, the county did get started with the sewer installation for the first portion of their infrastructure in the area across the street from Fisherman's Landing. So that started today. Schuman Railroad Crossing, that closure will start tomorrow and will last the remainder of the week with a planned opening for Saturday. And we have had visual message board signage out and we have put it out on social media and things like that. So that notice has been out there, but Schuman Railroad Crossing will be closed starting tomorrow. We've got some movement on the Riviera Gardenia Ditch project that had been kind of in the queue for a long time. That project is scheduled, scheduled to begin. They will start doing some site work in regards to camera activity, looking at property lines and things like that, starting up in next week. And then they will formally start what you call construction after the first of the year. We just didn't want to impact those homeowners because a lot of those were right in their backyards through the holidays. So they'll be doing some, some land work and things like that that doesn't involve any digging starting next week and then that'll formally get started after the first of the year. The last thing that I have is, and we will recognize it this Friday on social media, but staff, I'll point out Lee, since he made an appearance here tonight. He brought the idea to me that I fully supported and our staff is fully supported here at City Hall and with the police department. Employees that are able to, that don't have uniforms, every Friday the month of November, we're wearing red and it's for remembering, remember everyone deployed. So on Friday, our shirts are red here at City Hall and we will be advertising that on social media and asking the public to join us for the remainder of the Fridays the month of November. So that's a good, good thing that we're doing here and just wanted to highlight that.
May I make a recommendation or an idea?
Yep.
Consider a fundraiser and do City of Sebastian Red Friday shirts. And consider a fundraiser where the employees will buy the shirt and then wear it every Friday. It'd be a good fundraiser for, I don't know, whether a veterans organization or whatever, but then they would all have the same Red Friday shirts that would represent the city at the same time.
I think that's a great idea and I'm pretty sure I have a couple of staff members that will take that and run with it. And we may not get to it this year, but that will be next year. We will get that organized late in the summer and have that ready to rock and roll come November of 2020.
Is that a national thing that's being done by one of the veterans organizations?
Yeah, Lee said there's multiple organizations that are doing it. I don't know that it's like a nationally recognized thing, but like I said, it's something that, he brought it to my attention, fully support it and we will officially take a picture on Friday of all of staff that has their red shirts on and get it out on social media and acknowledge that and ask the public to join us as well.
Let's push it for next year and try to make it a Sebastian thing.
Yep, absolutely, we will.
Yeah.
And I think great idea with the shirts. We will absolutely make that happen next year.
Absolutely.
That is all that I have tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you so much, sir. City clerk matters? Uh, yeah.
I just want to thank everybody for, you know, your help tonight. It was, all your support was great and I don't have anything. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, Kathy. Councilmembers matters, Fred Jones, I have nothing. Mr. McPartland?
Well, I just want to welcome Ms. Matthews to the board up here. The rest of you have been here quite a while, so congratulations on there being no election. And then I think the weather was great for the clam bake this past weekend. I was out there Friday and Sunday, so it was really nice. And Veterans Day, once again, staff did a phenomenal job there yesterday. It's a little cold, but the sun was shining.
Yes.
So another great event. I mean, the speaker system has come so far in a short period of time and bub always does a fantastic job out there. So kudos to staff and we had the, the video crew was out there, I mean, looking very, more professional than when you see CNN out there or something. That's all I have, Mr. Jones.
All right, Mr. None?
Yeah, I want to say thank you to everybody that's supported me to be up here on the dais. I've enjoyed working hard for this city and over the many years now, it feels like forever since we got up here to begin with. But I just want to say thank you for all that support. It's appreciated.
Mr. Dodd?
Well, I just want to welcome you guys back. I was kind of lonely up here earlier today as I was the only one in here. But I will tell you that I watch other council meetings and it's a pleasure to come in this room compared to what some of the other ones walk into. So it's a testament because it is a pleasure to walk in here. Last thing, Representative Brackett just introduced a piece of legislation, I think, I have to apologize, I believe it's House Bill 160, but I'm not 100% sure. In that piece of legislation, it opens up the ability of entities to sue a municipality for a myriad of reasons, for almost unlimited reasons. And if the municipality wins, they can't get their legal fees back, but if they lose, they have to pay the other person's legal fees. And so it's a situation where we have someone who might just file all kinds of frivolous lawsuits against the city, hoping they win a few and we have to pay legal fees, especially, I kind of abate this to a municipal counsel chasing lawyer like an ambulance lawyer. Yeah, I'm going to file all kinds of suits against the city, knowing I'll get my fees paid if I can win this thing. I'd like to see if there's a consensus to get the city manager to, and I can work with Brian and get this information to the league of cities, to put together a letter to Representative Brackett from the mayor asking that he reconsider that piece of legislation and the impact that it could have on municipalities statewide, so.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, just for clarification, it's House Bill 105.
105.
Just in case anyone was taking notes.
Yes.
Just to make sure you are.
I have 160 on my mind from last year or so because that's another one that we got to deal with, but 105 is right. So that's, it can be a pretty bad piece of legislation for municipalities from a legal point of view. We had some experience this year with spending multiple tens of thousands of dollars to defend ourselves against frivolous lawsuits that we can't collect our money on. We can't get reimbursed even though we want every single one of those, we can't get reimbursed for it. So this will just open it up for more and more and more of those to take place. Is there an issue with?
No, it's nice to see Mr. Brackett remembering where he came from once again with another piece of legislation.
I mean, I kind of attribute it to not knowing what kind of pressures he's under, you know, but also it isn't really a good home rule thing.
No, not at all.
To do that, so, okay. No problem with that letter being written?
Nope, do it.
All right, is that it, Mr. Dodd? And are you finished?
I am finished.
All right, very good. Ms. Matthews, welcome. Sherry?
Thank you.
Now?
And I would like to thank you all for the warm welcome and congratulations, Mayor. You represent the city well and you do with everything that you do. I do want to, I just have one little thing that I would really like to do and I'm going to run it past the four of you and see what you think. I would love to honor those that are turning or getting close to turning 100 in our community and come up with some kind of little thing where we can honor those. I know we have one, I'm working now on trying to get how many we have. We have one that just, a veteran that just turned 101 that resides in our community, but I'd like to honor those folks, whether it's just a simple proclamation, whether it's a little, you know, maybe the 100 challenge coin, but come up with some type of group name, club name, you know, like something Platinum and Company, something like that, but something that as, as they age in, that we can represent and we can honor them and the legacy that they've, that they've lived and they bring to the community.
Yeah.
Just a thought.
No, I think that's a wonderful idea and I think that you can get something put together, get with Mr. Benton and then bring it back before us and I think that's great. I would love to be a part of that, recognizing someone like that.
The Sebastian Centurion.
Whatever. This guy just asked me if I was close to 100. Or he said I was close to 100.
Well, we're going to give you a Sebastian Centurion challenge coin.
Okay, whatever. Is that it, Ms. Matthews?
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have one thing, sorry. Sorry to jump in on you, I apologize.
Hang on, man.
I just want to make sure, we have a meeting on December 3rd and so we do have another meeting before this event takes place, but just make sure everybody has it on their calendar. Saturday, December 6th is the annual Christmas parade. We have a parade afloat committee and so, you know, we're going to have an amazing float and we've heard it loud and clear in the past that we need to improve upon that.